Bienvenidos a Esmoa. Mi nombre es Eva Sweeney, soy cofundadora de Esmoa y mi esposo Brian Sweeney está aquí también. Él es el segundo cofundador y mi hermano Bernard es el tercero. Él no está aquí, pero vendrá en octubre. Me gustaría comenzar con un reconocimiento de territorio. Aceptamos que estamos teniendo esta reunión en el territorio ancestral, ancestral y incedido de Tongva. Aceptamos al pueblo de Tongva como cuidadores tradicionales del territorio de Tongva Gar, las islas de los mares de Los Ángeles, Sur de Channel. También aprobamos que el condado de Los Ángeles es hogar de las mayores poblaciones indígenas en Estados Unidos. Ahora voy a hablar un poco sobre Esmoa porque algunos de ustedes nunca han estado aquí, así que creo que esto sería bueno para ustedes aprender más sobre lo que estamos haciendo. Estamos casi diez años. El 27 de enero de 2023 es nuestro aniversario de diez años. Este solía ser una calle vacía, si lo creen o no. Así que Esmoa se ha convertido en un miembro importante de la comunidad de El Segundo y del condado de Los Ángeles. Realmente nos importa lo que sucede en nuestro vecindario y es por eso que también estamos organizando este foro, porque queremos conocer a nuestros nuevos candidatos. Ha recibido más de 125.000 visitantes, más de 14.000 estudiantes, creó 42 experiencias y organizó más de 2.000 programas públicos. Mostramos las obras de más de 830 artistas y hemos hecho todo esto con un equipo muy pequeño. Barbara, Eugenia, Paloma y Max, por favor levanten sus manos. Muchas gracias por su trabajo duro. Es la misión de Esmoa actuar como catalizador de pensamiento creativo con un enfoque en exhibiciones experimentales, participación en la comunidad y educación artística. Definido como un museo experimental en lugar de tradicional, Esmoa es un socio provocativo, fresco y inteligente de la comunidad, buscando recalibrar las reglas de comprensión, conocimiento y hacerlo a través de los artes. Esmoa cree que los artes, la educación artística y la humanidad están en la base de cualquier sociedad. Estamos haciendo todo esto con nuestras estructuras programáticas triangulares. Nuestras experiencias, lo que ven aquí, son exhibiciones experimentales. Se llevan a cabo dos veces al año y luego tenemos nuestro programa público y educación artística para todos los edos y capacidades y específicamente desarrollados para cada experiencia para explorar el tema más profundamente. Los programas rángen desde talleres, conferencias, discusiones de panel, screenings, performances, festivales de cine, clubes de libros, ferias escolares y más. Por favor, tengan un programa junto a ustedes en la parte delantera y pueden aprender más de lo que está sucediendo. Entonces, nuestro tercer piloto de nuestro programa son las dos residencias de artistas. Una es una residencia internacional de artistas. Nos invitamos a tres artistas durante tres meses por año a venir y vivir en nuestros estudios de residencia de artistas, que está en el segundo piso justo detrás de esa pared. Y estamos esperando en unos días a un artista, cineasta de Italia. Su nombre es Matteo, el último nombre Eugenia, usted tiene... Di Billetti. Entonces, la segunda residencia de artistas es para artistas basados en LA. Los invitamos a crear un trabajo original, un arte comisionado o una performance o composición que responda a la exhibición de experiencias actual. Esmoa está aquí para ustedes, su familia, su empresa, sus empleados. Somos una recurso para ustedes. Pero ahora me gustaría presentar a nuestro moderador, Steven Napolitano. Steven es residente de Manhattan Beach durante su sexto mandato como mayor y previamente sirvió como senador de la supervisión del condado de LA Don Canaby durante 12 años. Felicitaciones. Steven conoce al gobierno local y ha trabajado con oficiales a todos los niveles a través de la bahía sur y más allá. Su trabajo diario es un abogado y su familia y vive unos pocos bloques de donde creció. Gracias, Steven, por estar aquí esta noche y le paso la palabra.
Gracias, Eva. Gracias, leyeron esa introducción justo como mi madre lo escribió, así que lo aprecio. Primero, quiero dar un aplauso a los Sweeney, quienes son residentes de Manhattan Beach y de Esmoa por poner esto en marcha. Este es un gran beneficio cívico aquí y también quiero agradecer a su mayor, Drew Boyle, justo aquí por me conceder un permiso a través de la frontera aquí en El Segundo. Ahora, una vez, entiendo y solo para reiterar que en realidad moderé esta misma forma hace unos años antes de COVID y muestra cómo mal son los recuerdos de la gente porque me pidieron que volviera y haga esta. Así que sin más, quiero saltar directo. Sé que han estado esperando esto, no están aquí para escucharme, están aquí para escuchar a los candidatos. Quiero decirles qué son las reglas fundamentales y recordarle al panel qué son las reglas fundamentales también. Cada candidato tendrá 90 segundos para dar una declaración de abertura. Las preguntas han sido enviadas previamente por los residentes de El Segundo y consolidadas por el personal de Esmoa. En otras palabras, no me culpar. Presentaré los temas y anunciaré cada pregunta a los candidatos. Cada candidato tendrá 60 segundos para responder cada pregunta, excepto la ronda de lightning, que es simplemente usted apoya o se opone. No queremos... Esto es un test para ver cómo bien siguen las direcciones. Al final del foro, cada candidato tendrá dos minutos para sus declaraciones de cierre. El personal de Esmoa hará el tiempo de la formación y los candidatos reciben un señal visual cuando quedan 10 segundos, que es la tarjeta roja y será cuando estén listos, tarjeta roja y luego ella te golpea con ella. La orden de oradores fue determinada por orden alfabética basado en el nombre del candidato. Empezaremos con Ryan Baldino, seguido por Michelle Keldorff, luego Robin Patch, John Pickhaver y Chris Pimentel. Alternaremos esos cuando respondamos preguntas, luego harán las declaraciones de cierre en orden inverso. Así que, Ryan, ¿estás listo con tu declaración de abertura?
¿Estoy permitido decir no?
Esa es la declaración de abertura más corta que hemos tenido.
Está bien, bueno, primero gracias, Brian, y gracias Eva por hospedarnos en su hermoso museo. Y gracias a todos por venir. Es bueno ver una habitación lleno aquí para aprender sobre sus candidatos. Y esta es una elección muy importante. Nuestra ciudad va a estar enfrentando algunas grandes elecciones y estoy contento de que todos tengan el tiempo para saber sobre los candidatos. Mi nombre es Ryan Baldino. Mi esposa Karen y yo descubrimos El Segundo cuando estaba contratada para enseñar en la escuela de la calle Richmond. Ella era la maestra de choira allí. Inmediatamente nos enamoramos de esta comunidad, no es difícil. Hace 18 años nos mudamos a la ciudad, hemos criado a nuestros dos hijos en esta comunidad y no podía ser más orgulloso de ellos y de su éxito que han tenido. Y mucho de eso tiene que ver con los gente de esta sala, algunos de los cuales hemos entrenado a nuestros hijos. Y están pasando por el sistema escolar público aquí, están actualmente asistiendo a la escuela secundaria. Yo mismo considero a mí mismo un producto orgulloso de la educación pública de California. Gradué la escuela secundaria en Washington High en Fremont, California, luego fui a la universidad en UC Riverside y luego obtuve mi doctorado jurídico en UC Hastings en San Francisco. Durante los últimos 21 años he estado trabajando como abogado de litigio. Especializado en casos complejos de construcción. Durante aproximadamente 13 años de ese tiempo, dirigí una empresa en Torrance con un compañero mío donde estaba en cargo de todo el contratación y el desempleo. Teníamos alrededor de cinco a siete abogados en cualquier momento. Mi experiencia voluntaria en la ciudad ha incluido servir 14 años como comisionado de planificación, el gran apoyo de nuestras escuelas, incluyendo la Fundación Ed, y gracias. No quería que me golpearan.
Lo aprecio, está bien, siguiente, Michelle Keldorff.
Gracias. Me enamoré de esta ciudad hace 12 años cuando mi esposo Chris y yo nos mudamos aquí para criar nuestra familia. Vivimos en una comunidad increíble y aún así hay todavía algo que hacer. Imagínense por un minuto vivir en un lugar donde nuestra industria vecinal hace que la salud y la seguridad de nuestros residentes sean prioridad. Imagínense la vivienda disponible que nuestra policía, bomberos, maestros, seniores y jóvenes profesionales pueden pagar y un presupuesto de infraestructura capital que apoya el mantenimiento de nuestros parques, túneles y carreteras. Imagínense que vivimos en una ciudad donde todos los residentes experimentan un sentido compartido de pertenencia y también que tenemos recursos suficientes para que nuestra policía y el fuego puedan continuar sirviendo y proteger en el nivel más alto. Como residente y madre, estoy involucrada en ver nuestra comunidad prosperar de estas formas. Mientras mi esposo Chris es de origen aquí, yo crecí en Central Florida. Asistí a Princeton, recibí un grado en economía, luego fui a la Universidad de Carolina del Norte y obtuve un máster conjunto en negocios y planificación de ciudad y regional. En 2004, me mudé a Southern California, me enamoré del tipo de la bahía sur y inicié una carrera de 18 años en vivienda y en desarrollo de la comunidad. He liderado esfuerzos de planificación para proyectos de mercado y comercial de precios cercanos y seguros y he servido en la comisión de planificación durante los últimos cuatro años. Como miembro del consejo, voy a defender la creencia en la creencia responsable, nuestra salud ambiental y asegurando que esta comunidad sea segura e inclusiva. Estoy corriendo porque creo que la dirección de la ciudad debe reflejar el aspecto de nuestra comunidad y tengo el fondo profesional y el temperamento personal para liderar efectivamente. Usaré mi voz para representar sus intereses. Gracias a Esmoa por hospedar y a nuestros residentes por estar aquí esta noche.
John Pickhaver.
Sí, también gracias a Esmoa por hospedar esta noche y gracias por estar aquí, todos. Mi nombre es John Pickhaver. Cuando me mudé de Filadelfia a Southern California en 2013, fue importante para mí encontrar un lugar que sintiera como casa. Traducción: Necesitaba ser una pequeña ciudad que tuviera acceso fácil a los soft pretzels. Estoy feliz de decir que eventualmente encontré eso aquí en El Segundo y mucho más. Viví en el centro de la ciudad con mi novio Sean de cinco años, quien está aquí esta noche, y nuestros dos pequeños, Ali y Elio, que no están aquí porque, bueno, son gatos. Trabajo en la industria de televisión y como escritor libre. Fuera de mi carrera, soy un corredor de larga distancia competitivo. Mi reclamo de fama aquí en la ciudad es que soy el recordador del curso de 10K en el Run for Education. Una carrera que organizo justo ahí con mi performance en el maratón de Los Ángeles 2017, donde fue el primer terminador estadounidense. He estado profundamente involucrado en la ciudad durante los últimos años, especialmente con el grupo Sweat Equity Alliance, un grupo de la comunidad activista que fundé aquí en la ciudad. He liderado muchos llamados a acción que han resultado en El Segundo siendo un lugar más agradable e inclusivo. Por ejemplo, convencí a la ciudad a declarar el Día del Pride en El Segundo y los convocaron a iluminar la torre de agua en Rainbow Lights. Estas son ahora las tradiciones anuales de El Segundo. Cuando me comprometo a algo en lo que me importa, estoy todo en y estoy energizado para traer esa misma pasión al consejo de la ciudad. Estoy corriendo porque la representación importa y es demasiado tiempo que tenemos un representante en el consejo que escuchará y defenderá a todos. Gracias.
Gracias, y solo para saltar, Chris, antes de usted, un recordatorio. Aún no ha disparado, pero si alguien tiene su teléfono en algo menos silencioso, ¿puede por favor cambiarlo a silencio para que no interrumpa los oradores? Y también vamos a pedir que se detengan de aplausos. Sabemos que hay gente aquí que apoya, tal vez aquellos que se oponen, pero queremos darle a todos una oportunidad justa y respetar el proceso entre sí. Así que pedimos que escuchen y luego pueden hablar con ellos después y darles un patada en la espalda cuando estén listos. Pero entre ahora y entonces, solo pedimos que se detengan de boos o de yes. Chris Pimentel.
Creo que es su primera.
Estás en lo cierto. Ya perdí el control de esto. No, tenía a usted siguiente, está bien, Robin Patch.
Gracias, Chris.
¿Dijiste confiar en el proceso?
Bueno, en ese punto, hola, mi nombre es Robin Patch. Me mudé aquí a El Segundo en 2014 de la parte de la izquierda de LA. Viví en la parte de la izquierda de LA durante diez años. Fui a UCLA para tanto mi doctorado como mi máster. Tengo mi doctorado en ciencias políticas y mi máster en política pública. Y ni siquiera sabía que El Segundo estaba aquí durante varios años porque me atrapaba en LA. Y una vez me mudé aquí, me enamoré como los otros candidatos han dicho. Estoy acostumbrada a una ciudad grande, a no conocer a tus vecinos y aquí la gente se ríe de la otra cuando caminan por la calle. Así que he estado aquí desde 2014 y no veo a mí mismo en ningún otro lugar. Ahora, mis hijos, tengo tres hijos, soy madre sola y mis hijos todavía están en la ciudad de LA USD. Pero me encantaría traerlos aquí y esta es mi primera vez corriendo para el cargo. Y el servicio público siempre ha sido mi pasión. He querido servir a la comunidad durante mucho tiempo. Solo no sentía que estaba en un lugar donde podría hacerlo, viviendo en una ciudad grande. Y así aquí estoy, primera vez corriendo para el cargo y siento que hay muchas necesidades en esta comunidad que pueden ser abordadas para nuestras comunidades menos servidas en particular. Y una de las cosas que propongo es establecer un comité de servicio de la comunidad.
Está bien, después de retirar mi script, Chris Pimentel.
Creo que hiciste un tiempo masterful la última vez, Steve, masterful. Gracias, todos. Saben, hace cuatro años estábamos en esta sala con fotos imposiblemente acomodadas de familia. Y eso es correcto, gracias. Las fotos son geniales, gracias. Y vine aquí y describí un apocalipsis fiscal en 2038, ¿verdad? Donde teníamos una obligación de pensiones sin financiamiento que estaba surgiendo. Y creo que algunos de ustedes me conocen de los Eagles en SPTO o arruinando las líneas en Little League, pero el resto de ustedes como, hey, ¿quién es este tipo? Y les dije que teníamos un plan para ello y si me elegían, podríamos arreglarlo y lo hicimos. Y les dije que dirigía un lugar en Irak que era horriblemente disfuncional y pedí que me confiara en la preparación de desastres y lo hicieron y funcionó. Y les dije que si me elegían, ¿verdad? Había cosas con trabajo que podíamos hacer y podíamos construir una fuerza policial segura que trabajaría con nosotros y eran fuera de contrato en ese momento y pudimos hacerlo y funcionó. Les dije que podíamos tomar una comunidad y crecer el lado económico que nos apoya sin sacrificar la calidad de la vida en la forma en que vivimos en El Segundo. Y ahora tenemos un boom en Smoky Hollow. Tenemos los Chargers, tenemos Belkins, tenemos L'Oréal y no ha cambiado la forma en que vivimos un poco. Así que sigamos adelante, recuerden, soy un tipo de Wichita, ¿verdad? Una ciudad no similar a esta, con una base de la Fuerza Aérea y túneles de petróleo y todos esos tipos de cosas. Pero la ética y el trabajo son iguales y solo pediría que me confiara por cuatro años más. Gracias.
Está bien, gracias a todos los candidatos por las declaraciones de abertura. Vamos a saltar a nuestras preguntas y rotar. Y dado dónde estamos en Esmoa, vamos a empezar con preguntas de arte y cultura. Y así se dirigirá a Michelle primero. El programa de desarrollo cultural comenzó en el año fiscal 2019-2020 y está financiado a través de una cuota del 1% para los artes en el desarrollo comercial y industrial para promover el arte público, foster el desarrollo económico y mejorar la estética del espacio público. ¿Cómo creen que estos fondos se utilizan mejor?
Absolutamente. Así que tenemos un número de diferentes comités y comisiones en El Segundo y arte y cultura entre ellos hace muy, en mi opinión, trabajo importante. 支持他们的努力。Fui a la votación de que asignara ese porcentaje en la comisión de planificación y luego finalmente pasó a el consejo de la ciudad de proyectos de desarrollo como tenemos para la primera vez realmente en la historia de El Segundo algunos proyectos significativos que están llegando, así que esos son dólares reales. Confío en su investigación y su experiencia y cómo esos proyectos deberían ser, esos fondos deberían ser asignados. Aunque lo diré, la reciente aprobación de una nueva insignia de puerta a El Segundo con el precio de $450,000 no era como yo habría asignado nuestros fondos. Un gran porcentaje de eso provino de arte y cultura, pero una buena cantidad también provino del presupuesto de la ciudad y en mi opinión, ese no es el mejor uso de nuestros fondos. Así que $450,000 para una insignia en Imperial en Maine, cuando tenemos otras necesidades en nuestra ciudad, no hubiera sido mi prioridad.
Gracias, John.
Sí, estoy de acuerdo con mucho de lo que Michelle dijo y creo que los artes son tan importantes aquí en la ciudad. Y tenemos una historia tan rica en El Segundo que creo que deberíamos hacer un esfuerzo para mostrar ese arte, las historias de El Segundo. El fondo, el fondo del 1% realmente contribuye a eso. Podríamos ver El Segundo a través de las décadas en la calle principal y también arte de dónde nos dirigimos en nuestro futuro. Me involucré aquí en El Segundo en 2020 bastante activamente con las protestas de justicia social donde la gente salió y realmente compartió sus historias y experiencias en El Segundo. Y creo que eso es algo que conseguir y poner en arte para que podamos ver toda la imagen total de El Segundo desde cuando el Standard Oil llegó hasta donde estamos ahora. Continuaría apoyando el fondo del 1% y como Michelle, definitivamente confiaría en las personas en el comité de arte para averiguar dónde debería ir este arte y qué exactamente deberíamos estar haciendo con él.
Gracias, Robin.
¿Quisieras repetir la pregunta una vez más por favor?
Sí, el 1% de la cuota para los artes, ¿cómo creen que estos fondos se utilizan mejor?
Bueno, soy una defensora de nuestra juventud aquí, especialmente nuestros estudiantes de secundaria y primaria. Y todos sabemos que los programas de secundaria, tener a los niños involucrados con arte y cultura. Yo estaría a favor de eso. También estoy de acuerdo con mis compañeros de equipo aquí en confiando en el comité de arte y cultura también. Así que apoyaría el 1%, pero también me gustaría ver específicamente más participación de la juventud con arte y cultura.
Chris.
Sí, creo que el fondo de arte y cultura une una aguja importante para la ciudad porque al tener un fondo de reserva para los artes, no lo haces negociar a costa de otras entidades. Hay cosas que encontramos que tienen un beneficio material para la ciudad, como el Art Walk o una insignia de bienvenida o arreglar una torre de reloj que si siempre estamos pesando esos contra uno más de un carro de policía o arreglando una tubería de túnel, nunca van a terminar. Y es por eso que esa insignia se quedó ahí fallando por 50 años, ¿verdad? Siempre estaba a costa de algo más. Así que al tener un fondo de empresa de reserva que trabaja con esas cosas específicamente, que tienen un beneficio material para la ciudad pero no suben sobre nuestras otras prioridades, nos permite abordar esas cosas y es una cuestión que tiene sentido. Ahora, creo que estoy de acuerdo con todos los demás aquí. No quiero ninguna parte de aprobar el arte, quiero decir, no. De lo contrario, siempre sería Roger Staubach alentando al Dr. J. Quiero decir, no, no quiero ser parte de eso. Pero por el mismo token, hay cosas que benefician a la ciudad, apoyan a la ciudad, hacen de la ciudad notable que siempre estarán competiendo con más activos importantes si no dejamos de tener un banco separado para ello.
Gracias, Ryan.
Así que cuando esto llegó antes de la comisión de planificación, seré honesto, estaba en contra de la idea porque estábamos en algunos tiempos económicos difíciles y pensé que si vamos a tener fondos adicionales, deberían ir a las pensiones. Pero como siempre, voy a reunirme con alguien y tomé café con Eva y Bernard y ellos realmente abrieron mis ojos en cuán importantes los artes son para una sociedad y para una comunidad. Y estoy muy feliz de que hayan tenido esa conversación conmigo. La pregunta de cómo quiero ver los fondos usados, estoy de acuerdo que tenemos muchas personas inteligentes en nuestros board y comisiones, incluyendo la Comisión de Arte y Cultura, gente con experiencia en arte y murals de tamaño grande y lo mismo. Relajaría mucho en esa experiencia y seguirán sus recomendaciones. Una cosa que me gustaría ver más es usar estos fondos para eventos culturales, tratando de trabajar con DEI y tener más celebración de diversidad en nuestra ciudad al unir a la gente. Sé que lo hemos hecho antes aquí en nuestra plaza principal y me gustaría ver más de eso hecho también en el futuro.
Gracias, John, tienes la siguiente. Steve, Los Ángeles, Culver City y West Hollywood.
Y Manhattan Beach.
Todos mantienen el financiamiento para el arte público a través de donaciones. ¿Seguiría apoyando un programa similar de donación del municipio de El Segundo para las instituciones de arte y cultura locales, públicas y non-profits? Un programa así apoyaría a tales non-profits existentes como el Museo de Drive Automotriz, Old Town Music Hall y Esmoa.
Sí, absolutamente, eso se vuelve a mi respuesta de la última vez donde tenemos una historia rica aquí y sí, la Old Town Music Hall, el Museo de Autobuses. Necesitamos preservar eso y invertir dinero en ellos. Lo que me gustaría ver es, perdón, estaba pensando en una historia que no puedo recordar, pero la tengo ahora. Así que, desde que he estado campañando, he estado saliendo en El Segundo mucho y fui a un show de arte en Smoky Hollow y pensé que estaba en Venecia. Hay tantos artistas y creadores aquí que necesitamos crear oportunidades para ellos para ser levantados y mostrar su arte. Y creo que este dono es un gran paso hacia adelante en hacer eso y me encantaría ver Smoky Hollow transformarse de, ya saben, la ciudad de la industria que antes era en solo un distrito de artes creativas y me gustaría perseguir este dono, uniendo a nuestras otras ciudades vecinales.
Gracias, siguiente, Robin.
Sí, estoy de acuerdo también con la propuesta de dono. Poniendo en pie la última pregunta, los artes y la cultura son definitivamente importantes para nuestra comunidad en general y apoyaría una coalición para los artes públicos también. Y creo que también podríamos unir nuestro comité actual, el comité de arte y cultura, para ver qué sería su input también.
Chris, tu postura sobre los dones de arte a los non-profits.
Sí, mi primer lugar de comisión en el consejo era para nuestro comité de arte y cultura y es impresionante. Quiero decir, es increíblemente bien dirigido, como el plan Toyota bien dirigido. Y ese proceso por el que asigna programas y proyectos es un logro de croun entre nuestros comités, comisiones y board. Creo que ese proceso funciona, hacer dones directos por un consejo de la ciudad. Saben, le hice una broma la última vez sobre la cosa de Roger Staubach. Los Cowboys no son tan divisivos, pero si tienes consejos de la ciudad involucrados en tratar de enviar dones a programas de arte individuales, cuando es el Museo de Drive Automotriz, no es divisivo en absoluto. Pero si vas cuatro años por la ruta y va a haber algo que, ya saben, alguien quiere vainilla y alguien quiere chocolate y esas cosas se desvanecen muy rápidamente y se vuelven divisivas. Así que ese no es el tipo de cosa que el consejo de la ciudad quiere ser un árbitro de. Realmente me gustan los proyectos y programas que tenemos ahora, creo que funciona, creo que es algo que podemos estar detrás. Así que no defendería que nos involuviéramos en hacer dones directos.
Ryan.
Sí, antes de que aceptara usar dólares de impuestos para cualquier tipo de programa de donación, realmente necesitaría mirar eso seriamente antes de tomar ninguna decisión. También me gustaría ver más en lo que el 1% se está usando. Creo que estamos muy afortunados de vivir en esta ciudad. Estamos rodeados de algunos de los negocios más importantes en el mundo y estas personas, quieren devolverle a nuestra comunidad. Tal vez no sepan cómo, pero si hay un deseo de financiar a los non-profits y tener más artes allí, puede haber una avenida privada para ir por esa ruta. Y luego de nuevo, estoy de acuerdo con Chris. No creo que quieran que los miembros del consejo de la ciudad decidan qué es arte y qué no es arte. Pero de nuevo, tenemos un comité lleno de gente talentosa en esta ciudad que están dispuestos a voluntar su tiempo y su experiencia y creo que sería el mejor comité para ejecutar cualquier tipo de programa de donación.
Michelle.
Dividiré algunos de los sentimentos aquí. De nuevo, tenemos un número de comisiones y comités y todos tienen expertos muy talentosos en sus industrias, miembros de nuestra comunidad, entre los arts y la cultura. Y esto es algo que probablemente pondría bajo su umbrella. Así que si hay una oportunidad de colaborar con los non-profits locales y de una manera en la que la ciudad no necesariamente esté pagando el presupuesto para ese dono, pero podemos seguir, ya saben, defenderlo y usar los recursos de nuestro comité de arte y cultura para promoverlo, apoyo mucho a eso. Tenemos este sentimiento de vivir en una comunidad pequeña y podemos discutir, estoy seguro esta noche, qué significa y qué se ve. Pero para mí es una comunidad de gente que apoya a la otra y los artes ciertamente traen eso. Cuando vimos el Art Walk, ves el cambio también de una ciudad industrial, que es realmente una industria creativa reflejada en nuestros residentes. Y creo que eso va a ser algo que creciendo queremos apoyar. Pero estoy de acuerdo que probablemente sea mejor servido por el comité de arte y cultura navegando ese proceso para nosotros y determinando quiénes son los mejores usuarios finales.
Gracias, Robin, siguiente, otra twist en el mismo tema. La Comisión de Arte y Cultura está encargada de promover el arte público y el programa en la comunidad. Actividades culturales a través del año incluyen instalaciones de arte pública, exhibiciones rotativas y experiencias y una variedad de eventos especiales. ¿Qué proyectos de arte y cultura futuros te gustaría ver y cómo ves el futuro de los artes y la cultura públicas en El Segundo?
Está bien, wow, es un buen.
Yo lo pensé.
Como todo el mundo aquí ha mencionado, esta ciudad tiene mucho valor artístico y me gustaría ver eso continuar. Y en términos de exhibiciones futuras, amo el Art Walk, me gustaría ver más de ellos, en realidad. Y en términos de lo que podemos hacer, de nuevo, involucrar a los miembros de la comunidad locales, llegar a ellos y me gustaría ver más niños involucrados también.
Chris.
Quiero decir, me asusté abiertamente de esta pregunta. No hay parte de mi cerebro que funcione de alguna manera sobre la creatividad o el arte de alguna manera útil.
Solo tenemos cinco más de los seis.
Sí, voy a seguir, voy a seguir paralizando, ¿cuánto tiempo? No, creo que uno de los ventajas notables que no preveímos de nuestra programación de arte fue el Festival de las Navidades. Tenemos, ya saben, lo que era una segunda mayor comunidad minoritaria, pero ahora es nuestra tercera mayor, fue nuestra comunidad asiática sur y verlas llenas, absolutamente llenas, la plaza cívica con presentaciones de danza asiática sur fue algo que no preveíamos venir. Así que creo que hay todo tipo de estas cosas que deferimos al comité para salir con ideas que son estos secretos éxitos. Así que si pudiera levantar mi bandera mágica y decir, hagan algo como eso pasar de nuevo, lo haría. Me gustaría ver que nuestra torre de reloj se arregle, quiero decir, lo haría, pero no sé cuán altamente eso esté en su orden de progresión. Pero estoy muy diferencial en eso solo porque no es mi área de experiencia. Pero cosas que traen a la gente de una manera que trae todo el mejor de El Segundo celebrado juntos, esos son ventajas.
Ryan.
Creo que me tocó esto cuando dije que me gustaría ver más eventos que traigan a la comunidad juntos. El festival cultural es una gran idea, pero soy un gran fan de todo lo que realmente nos permite entender uno al otro un poco mejor. Y creo que eso es lo que es todo el arte, ya saben, estás tratando de expresarte a otros, tal vez hagas una conexión allí. Y cuando se trata del arte, la cosa que más aprecio es que realmente es lo que sacas de él. Así que cuando se trata de lo que quiero ver, la única cosa que puedo pensar de la cabeza son esas, ya saben, esas cajas eléctricas en la calle que son gris. Deberíamos cubrir esas de alguna manera creativa. Como tenemos muchas personas creativas en la ciudad que podrían hacer algo mejor que una caja gris que ves en nuestras calles. Así que pequeñas mejoras para esparcir arte a través de la comunidad, creo que sería un gran beneficio y ser algo un poco de levantamiento para todos.
Gracias, Michelle.
Claro, así que a lo largo de la campaña he conocido a muchos residentes a largo plazo y nuevas familias que han venido a la ciudad y hay este mensaje consistente sobre vivir en una comunidad donde todo el mundo tiene metas y objetivos compartidos y me encanta. Pero una pregunta que también ha surgido es cómo contactamos con nuestra población senior que tal vez es un poco aislada. Tenemos muchos residentes en Park Vista y veo una oportunidad de incorporar los artes con nuestra juventud y nuestros seniores y crear algún tipo de actividad que trae a la comunidad entera, pero eso es un acceso directo. Así que había una idea de si nuestros estudiantes hacen tarjetas a los seniores y viceversa y tienen este tipo de relación de papá y papá. Y, ya saben, cae, diría, bajo la umbrella de arte y cultura. Estoy de acuerdo, no soy el que debería estar allí diciendo a nosotros, ya saben, qué esfuerzo va a beautificar nuestra comunidad, pero sé cómo contactamos con los residentes y formar ese tipo de conexión y el arte parece ser una forma en la que eso pueda ser hecho.
Gracias, John.
Yeah, so, believe it or not, I actually have a Masters of Fine Arts, but it's in screenwriting. I'm by no means an artist, but, you know, having that degree, you meet a lot of people who have MFAs. They, they talk about it. They get less excited when I say, oh, no, I can't draw. I can't, can't do that. But there is just a community here in El Segundo who really values arts, especially in this Smoky Hollow district, which is my favorite part of the Art Walk. And if we could just create an environment in Smoky Hollow where there's an ongoing Art Walk, I think that will really draw a lot of people in and will really enhance our community. And I, I agree what's been said about events, you know, often we just think of a painting when we think of art, but the events are great too. And another point I wanted to make was outdoor dining. You know, I can't remember if this was at the end of 2020 or at the start of 2021, but the Arts and Culture Committee put on an excellent presentation of what permanent outdoor dining would look like in El Segundo. The orange barriers were gone and I just think that's something we need to look into rather than just receiving and filing.
Thank you. All right, on to the next question. One more art question, Chris, and it's going to start with you. How are public spaces like parks and recs changing? What role do they serve in our community? How do you think public art can be utilized to improve these spaces, to make them more interactive?
Well, there's a reason rec parks in the middle of town, right? It's a, it's a central and unifying spot. I, I think that most everyone here goes there, whether they have children or not, at some point. I think that when we have recreation spots, it's important for us to know, you know, what is the key demand for them and those change over time. You know, whether it's horseshoes or shuffleboard or, or, look, we had the high school present to us a series of ideas about what the future of the park could be, some of which we hadn't even considered, right? And, and an amphitheater on that northwest corner, what a good idea that is, right? And so all of those sort of form-functional pieces, is it, is it nominally art? It, it, it kind of is, but really what it does is facilitate a place to bring people together. The Library Park Poetry Exhibition was a fantastic use of it, right? It was, it was exactly the sort of thing that we want an Arts and Culture Committee to bring to us. But as we shape the park going forward, as we redo the key parts of it now that are decrepit, look to build new things, having avenues for it that allow public art to be a part of that is certainly a part of, or a valid use of the funds.
All right. Thank you. Next up, Ryan.
So when we talk about land use, what we try to aspire for as a city and as a community is what is the best use of this land? And when you talk about parks, sometimes the best use of that land is to be a park and to have a bench and a tree. So when, it's great to have art, but you also want to think about what are the needs of our communities? And we've got a very family-friendly community. We have a lot of seniors that use rec park a lot. And while you can integrate art in a somewhat passive way there, I wouldn't want that to become the center focus of what rec park is. Rec park is where we're going to hang out with our friends, where we're going to chase our toddlers around, where we're going to try to coach AYSO as best we can. And if it doesn't rain within 48 hours, maybe we can play Little League on the field. So for me, I think art is important, but I also think that our parks and rec facilities need to be redone and that needs to be done based on the needs of the community, which again, should come from our Parks and Rec Commission because they are the experts we rely on. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle?
Sure, you're going to keep asking about art and I'm going to continue to talk about committees, but those two things are connected. So Arts and Culture Committee, Parks and Rec Committee. The Parks and Rec Committee is literally begging for additional work to do and there, there's been some sense that city council is kind of taking those roles in-house and I think that there's a tremendous opportunity to bring those two committees, committees together. We do have huge public infrastructure needs, $5 million of a phased redesign of rec park or refresh, I should say, sports courts, teen center, skate park. Those certainly have opportunities to incorporate that 1% arts and culture budget in there. I know that there was somebody who came to the Parks and Rec Committee meeting who had worked up a fabulous art design for the skate park and that's been sitting somewhere for three years. And we continue to kind of move things down the road and there's a real opportunity to get our residents to make those things a reality and deploy those resources in real time.
Thank you. John?
Yeah, I think if we were to bring somebody from the Arts Committee that's in the audience up here, they would have a ton of ideas that they've already presented to council and again, these tend to get received and filed and they collect the digital dust. I think we really need to take these recommendations seriously when we come to that, come to us as a council because they present opportunities to really enhance our community. I think in, in terms of the parks more specifically, you know, the funds that we're putting into them should go towards the directed amenities that we utilize at the parks, the tennis courts, the basketball courts, skate park, you know, that's what the priority should be. But we should also make use of this space. I, I lived in New York for a summer and, you know, going to Shakespeare in the Park at Central Park was something that I liked to do. I, you know, Mayor Pro-Pimentel mentioned the amphitheater. I, I think that would be great. We, we can double up on what the parks are designed for to create new opportunities for art, even if that's not what they are all the time.
Robin?
Yes, thank you for another arts question. I agree with my colleagues here that we, to, not necessarily defer, but to rely on the wisdom of our current Arts and Culture Committee. In terms of the parks and recs, the, excuse me, rec park specifically, I'm definitely in favor of a short-term makeover, so to speak, rather than a long-term expensive overhaul. Now, in regards to incorporating art into the redesign of rec park, I'm not opposed to that, but I feel that the funding for arts could be used in a better manner, specifically like doing events, community engagement. And I would again, rely and listen to the Arts and Culture Committee, but I'm, I'm definitely more on the fiscally frugal side when it comes to funding.
Thank you. Now that's going to take us to our lightning round. Again, these are just, do you support or do you oppose? They're yes or no questions? Absolutely serious. I'm, I'm mostly serious. These are, these are, do you support or do you oppose? That's it. We're not asking for long-winded answers. We're not looking for any dodges or anything like that. So, and it starts with you, Ryan. Question number one. Measure W would legalize commercial cannabis retail sales in El Segundo. Do you support or oppose Measure W?
No on W, yes on Y.
Oppose W, support Y.
John, could you repeat the question, please?
Measure W would legalize commercial cannabis retail sales, sales in El Segundo. Do you support or oppose Measure W?
Yes on W.
I oppose W and support Y.
I oppose W as well.
All right, we'll go reverse order in this. Measure Y would establish a tax on commercial cannabis sales in El Segundo. Do you support or oppose Measure Y? Robin?
Support.
I support Y and still oppose W.
I thought this was coming next.
Support or oppose? Go ahead.
Yeah, so I would support Y.
Okay.
Support Y.
Yes on Y.
All right. Measure BT would adjust how business license taxes are assessed in El Segundo. Do you support or oppose Measure BT? And we'll start with Michelle.
Support.
Begrudgingly support.
I support.
I support as well.
All right.
Well, I get to support it.
You do? Nobody said you couldn't. Many of El Segundo's neighboring cities charge for parking in their downtown commercial districts. Would you support or oppose parking meters in downtown El Segundo? Chris?
I would not support parking meters.
Okay. Robin?
No.
John?
No.
Michelle?
Were you watching the high school forum? No, no parking meters.
Ryan?
No on parking meters in El Segundo.
Do you support or oppose permanent outdoor dining? John?
I support.
Chris?
I support.
Robin?
I support it as well.
Michelle?
I support it.
Ryan?
I support it.
Boxers or briefs? Okay, just kidding. Now they, we're into political questions, they've titled these. Do you feel crime has increased in El Segundo and if so, what are your plans to address it? I think I left off last time. We're going to go to Michelle for that.
I'm first. Consensus among our residents is definitely that crime is up and I think that that is symptomatic of our larger LA County, county-wide community. Overall, those numbers are increasing and I've had an opportunity, which I've loved over the past couple of weeks, to sit down with our police chief and get to know some of our sergeants and officers better and understand what they're doing, deterrence in El Segundo, because we really don't have any jurisdiction over penalizing those, those criminal activities is still our best line of defense. I know that there's been a recent allocation, a discretionary fund allocation of additional patrol services, so unarmed patrol services that would circulate the community and would act as a deterrent. And yeah, I certainly hear residents about that. I hear crime. I hear homeless. We've been, you know, meeting everybody over the last several weeks and those are two things that certainly impact our daily life. I believe our police force should be allocated the resources that they need to effectively serve and protect our community at the highest level.
John?
Yeah, this question is very interesting to me because the way it's presented, like, do you feel crime is going up or is crime going up? I think no matter how you interpret it, you can't ignore the way people feel. So we need to address that, but part of that is being transparent about what our crime rates are so we can be better informed when we're making these decisions. You know, I'm enrolled in the Community Police Academy with the El Segundo Police Department and these officers are just, they work so hard for us, in and out throughout the community and we need to make sure we have the support that they need. But at the same time, we have one of the best residents-to-officer ratios in the state of California. So we need to make use with what we have, but also ensure that we are giving officers the respect that they deserve. I think another thing is community education on this issue and just being more proactive with programs that can help you not be a victim of crime, increasing our outreach on that front.
Thank you. Robin?
Could you please repeat the question for me?
Do you feel crime has increased in El Segundo and if so, what are your plans to address it?
Yes, well, I agree with my colleagues here. I've been out in the community talking to people for well over a month now and crime is the number-one concern that I hear. People don't feel safe in the community even, and they feel that our officers are understaffed and I completely agree. I'm pro-law enforcement. I believe that we need more officers, more boots on the ground. We've got a small population here, yes, for our residents, but during the day, we have our corporate headquarters here and they expand, the population swells to 100,000. Our police aren't equipped to accommodate that whole community at once and I feel that these large corporations that are here should be contributing more to our police resources so that we can have more officers on the ground and increase our patrolling as well.
Thank you. Chris?
I think people feel like crime has increased because it has and even if the individual number of misdemeanors is roughly the same, the fact that a misdemeanor now is twice the value of what it used to be makes it a bigger impact. You know, before somebody stole a $300 bike, well, that's a misdemeanor. Now they can steal $950, they can steal three of your bikes and it's still a misdemeanor. So it's classified as the same crime, but it's obviously more impactful and that's just a change in the legal regime. So the way people feel does reflect reality. Now, what we've done for that, you know, we fully staff the police force. We've given them, you know, effectively all the tools that we want, but, but as Michelle alluded to, they can arrest as many people as they want if those people are not being charged. If courts are overwhelmed because of the pandemic, they were closed. If the jails are not taking people, then in that case, we're still dealing with the same aggregate number of offenders. So the idea of bringing people out of retirement to be able to patrol, that's a temporary solution and admittedly threads a very, very, very fine CalPERS needle, but by the same token, if you hire more officers, when you hire an officer, you hire him for 60 years. That's an $18 million commitment per officer. So you hire four more officers, you're at 72,000 bucks.
That's our time. We've got to move on. Ryan?
I have heard from friends that they have experienced an increase in crime and knocking on doors, I have heard time and time again, you know, what is happening in El Segundo? This, this town, this town is changing. Unfortunately, the prosecution of these crimes is not within the hands of our city. We have to rely on folks in Los Angeles who have different desires and different expectations and what we consider a crime here in town, to some, who don't live in our town, just look at it as a quality of life issue. So we really need to rely heavily on our public safety, our police officers, as we always have. And my solution would be simply just to work with them as we, we do, to find out what they need for their resources, what they're hearing from folks on the street and what else can be done to make sure that everyone here feels safe, that we feel safe letting our kids walk to school and we know that we're going to be safe when we go to sleep at night.
Thank you. Michelle, I think I started with you last time, right? All right, John, you're up next. Sacramento has adopted a number of new laws that restrict local control over zoning matters. Do you support these changes to increase housing in El Segundo? If not, how will you address the new housing requirements for El Segundo? And how do you support additional housing in El Segundo?
Yeah, I think the reason these mandates came down the pipe from Sacramento is because this is an issue, affordable housing and more housing, that we've ignored for decades. So we can complain about the mandates, but we need to address this problem regardless. 60% of El Segundo residents are renters. 40% of all residents actually qualify for affordable housing. You know, I think when we hear affordable housing, it's this buzzword that it's going to bring people in that we don't want here. Well, I don't subscribe to that philosophy. That's, that's not even the issue. These people are already here. They're our neighbors. And I think we need to look at it in a way where, where can we create more housing? I'm of the mind of let's spread density out. You know, let's not just keep building in the same areas so the same neighbors have to deal with the same construction. I think I'm maybe one of the only, or at least a couple of candidates, that support housing east of PCH. I don't believe that would change the nature of our town. I believe it's just a new opportunity to be a part of the solution here.
Thank you. Robin?
Yes, thank you, John. I firmly believe in preserving the small-town feel of this community and I am also concerned about affordable housing for residents. There has recently been approving a 200-plus-unit apartment complex on the west side of PCH, which would have affordable housing units as well and I'm definitely in favor of that. I feel that there are opportunities that we can work within our current boundaries of the residential area of El Segundo. I am opposed to expanding housing east of PCH and part of my concern for that, besides being the small, keeping the small-town feel, feel, excuse me, is the school districts as well. Right now, businesses west of PCH, their revenue does not go to our school district. So that's something I'd be concerned with as well.
Chris?
This one's somewhat frustrating because the concept or the construct from Sacramento is that we're not doing anything. And what is frustrating, I know frustrates other people in the dais and with our cities in our region, is we continually go to Sacramento with solutions and they're not interested because they didn't come up with them. And it, and it, we have asked for abatements on taxes for commercial residential conversion to incent mixed-use. They didn't want any part of it. We've asked for them to not consider the environmental, the sound contour on Imperial. If we were to put affordable and attainable housing along that contour so we could credit it, they weren't interested. We have asked them for CEQA exemptions for conversions in Smoky Hollow. They were not interested. We've asked them to stop CEQA abuse by labor industry, by, by labor groups to stop our construction. They were not interested. So it's very frustrating for us when they say, oh, you're not building housing and we show up with them with solutions. Now recently, you know, we helped author SB 1444, which the South Bay Housing Trust, that passed. It doesn't have any funding, but the idea is it would incent or cushion the fall of, of some of the pencil issues and cost efficiencies of developers to build mixed-use housing or attainable housing.
Thank you. That's our buzzer. We're going to move on to Ryan.
This, this is the issue that concerns me the most. You've got people in Sacramento who want to tell us how our town should be and our town has been laid out purposely for a reason. Like, we all love the small-town because it's been zoned as a small-town. We've got our economic powerhouse over there that gives us the funding so that we can have the, the services that we all need. And when it comes to what Sacramento wants to do, they want to treat every town the same and we're not all the same. We're all different. So when Sacramento passes laws, which it'll continue to do, that takes away local control, I think it's the duty of the city council to do what can be done, to try to maintain whatever local control we can. I want the decisions of what this town is going to be made by the people who live in this town. It's that simple. Now, when it comes to where should housing be, I think it should, I would like to see it stay at this side of PCH. I would like to see what can be done in our current R2 and R3 zone to increase density. And as we talk about redoing our Smoky Hollow plan, once again, maybe there's an opportunity to put housing there as well. to put housing there as well. Downtown plan's already been zoned for housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle?
Sure. So here's the thing, the five of us, any five city council members are not going to go up to Sacramento and change these rules that are in place. We do have state housing mandates. Our cycle went from needing to produce 70 units over the last eight years to now close to 500. And that is a big number, and I know that as a community, that makes everybody take pause. And my position on this is that we need to be proactive in our approach because if we're determining how and where we're going to build units, then that keeps the state from coming and telling us it has to be east of PCH or it has to be in this area. And as a city council, we have got to be proactive in our decision-making. So I would prioritize our efforts west of PCH on underutilized problematic sites. I would look to incorporating housing in the Smoky Hollow plan, have commercial on the ground floor, residential above, create opportunities for young professionals, live, work. There was a section of our zoning that was changed from residential to Smoky Hollow. I would move that back to residential, create a townhome opportunity. We do need to create places for firefighters, police, teachers, seniors, and young professionals to continue to live and contribute to our community.
Thank you. All right. Robin, you get the fun one?
Uh-oh.
The City of El Segundo's Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, DEI Committee, was established by the city council in October 2020 with the purpose of integrating diversity, equity, and inclusion into the city of El Segundo. Currently, El Segundo City Council has an entirely white board of council members, and all of the candidates here today are white as well. Do you feel as though this is a problem which would benefit from change? Further, what diversity do you bring to the table, and how do you plan to support the DEI committee and overall DEI efforts in El Segundo?
That's a great question. First and foremost, when it comes to any job, teacher, council member, lawyer, whomever, I feel that whoever's the most qualified should get that position. And so I do not believe in fulfilling a quota, so to speak. Now, in terms of the DEI here in El Segundo, I'm completely in support of having a DEI committee. Now, in regards to our racial makeup, I don't think that's a problem. I'd be happy to see people from every background come up and put themselves out here on the table and run. Now, this community is predominantly white, so I think that probably has a lot to do with the makeup of, you know, our council and our fellow candidates. So I would definitely support the DEI committee, but I do not think that this town has a problem with equity or inclusion. I think it's very inclusive, and I would be willing to work with the DEI. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris?
You know, I think the thrust of that question is really about engagement, and part of that is, you know, irrespective of, you know, whether I'm, you know, half Portuguese, half Irish guy up here, it's really who do you talk to? Who do you listen to? What points of view do you bring to bear in your decision-making? So if we thought ourselves a sort of balkanized and cloistered community, that would be one thing. But I think we're not. You know, we all live with the same square mile. We see each other sort of irrespective of our ethnicities and our religions and all of those things. I think what we perceive you ask of us when we run for these offices is, are we making that outreach and listening to those different outputs? So, you know, what our households look like and where we go to church is less of a concern than it is about who we talk to and how we form our opinions. And I think that's the sort of mindset that you ask for up here.
Okay. Ryan?
So diversity is important. There's no doubt about that. That's something I learned growing up. I've lived in San Francisco, Riverside, a lot of different areas. What I've learned or what I've seen of late is that when people hear the word diversity is kind of a trigger. Some people think it makes it like divisive. And when I hear diversity, I think it's really about just kind of listening and understanding, right? We all have different life experiences. I know that as a straight, white man, I've had a very different experience in America from anyone who isn't a straight, white man, right? But I can learn from others. And that's, again, when you're talking about diversity, it's not about quotas or we have to do this and that. It's about being open to listen to your neighbor because they've gotten something important to share with you. And so I absolutely believe that DEI is important. In fact, I met with our El Segundo Economic Development Corporation, and their three priorities are they want more housing, they want more amenities for their businesses on that side of town, and they want to be seen as a leader in diversity and inclusion.
Thank you. Michelle?
Yep. I do believe that we should have city leadership that reflects the makeup of our community. And when we talk about DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion, we're not just talking about race-based identity, right? We're talking about gender. We're talking about sexuality. We're talking about religion. And we do currently have not just an all-white council. We have four male council members. I believe we have all five heterosexual council members. So diversity is more than just race-based, and I very much support the DEI efforts in our community. I believe that that is something that, as a community, we can improve on. And it is possible, and I will keep coming back to this, to hold these two beliefs at the same time. It is very much possible to support inclusion in our community and support and value and respect our police officers, and those two things in my mind should never be in conflict. And I will stand behind that the course of this campaign. But yes, going back to your question, I do believe that we need more diversity on council.
Thank you. John?
Yeah, so I first got involved in El Segundo when I joined the group El Segundo for Black Lives, when the protests started on Main and Imperial. And in that experience, I listened to my neighbors, people of color, sharing their stories of discrimination that they faced here in El Segundo. Some of them had never told anyone before. It was a very cathartic experience for these people telling their story. And I'm totally on board with, of course, we need to listen. I think everybody would agree with that. I think where we fall short is we listen and we don't take action. Yes, we created a DEI committee, but the DEI committee doesn't have a budget. You might be surprised to learn that the city's number-one strategic goal is to enhance diversity, equity, and inclusion. I think we fall into this trap too often of just checking boxes to say that we did something. You know, the reason I joined El Segundo for Black Lives is also because I'm gay. And if the situations were reversed, I would want to know that I had the support of my neighbors too. I think we need to listen to each other, and then when we listen, we need to take action.
That's our time on that one. All right, we're at the quarter waypoint through our program. Everyone, take a breath, look around you, look at all the neighbors that are here. This is an incredible turnout. Give yourselves a round of applause. All right, that's your seventh inning stretch. Everyone back down. All right, next question. This goes to Chris. We see who's leaving. We're taking notes. Los Angeles County, the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health issued a health alert in late July regarding elevated bacteria levels at several beaches near Dockwiler and El Segundo in the area of the Hyperion Water Reclamation Plant, which spilled 17 million gallons of raw sewage into the ocean on July 11th. In a special city council meeting held on September 8th, 2022, El Segundo City Council unanimously declared a local state of emergency due to the emission of noxious gases and foul odor. In an ideal world, what does accountability for this occurrence look like, and what steps should be taken to ensure something like this doesn't happen again? Again, Chris?
You know, in an ideal world, it is treated as the public health and environmental disaster at a state and federal level that it is, right? And we have, if there's any positive outcome from the complete dysfunction of the LA City Council, it's that it lays bare why it is so hard for us to work with them. Their interests are so internal and divisive that they can't look at an environmental crisis right next door that's caused by one of their agencies. So if there's a positive outcome, that allows us to go over their heads, right? And the idea that the City of El Segundo now can have access to state and federal funding to correct this, that if I had a magic wand a year ago, I would have wished for, but we're stuck in the LA city bureaucracy. But I don't think that we are any longer because we can point to this obvious display of incompetence by them, an obvious display of public corruption. And people say, in our state delegation, you say, this is where it does not work, and this is why we need your intervention. So we're fortunate to have a delegation that supports us at the federal level and state, and I think that's the magic wand moment.
Ryan?
So the question is, what do we do about Hyperion and the environmental disaster? We got the same question today at the high school forum, only they asked, is the air safe to breathe? And that's heartbreaking, right? Our children don't know if our air is safe to breathe, and honestly, I had to tell them, I don't know either. So we need to hold Hyperion accountable. And as Chris pointed out, it's not easy as a city council person because Hyperion is not within the jurisdiction of El Segundo. Hyperion will never stop operating. It's going to run 24/7. And so we have to use what leverage we have as a city, as city council members, to work with the state and the county and the city of Los Angeles to have some real accountability. Because what happened cannot happen again. And so it's got to go beyond just fence line monitoring. It's got to go beyond consultants. We need some real action that's going to let us all know that we can tell our children that, yes, yes, the air is safe.
All right, now I feel predictable if this was asked earlier today. Michelle?
Yep, so here's the leverage that we have. We are incredibly economically significant, right? We are the most, five economic, we have the five most economically significant miles in all of Southern California. We have the second highest number of Fortune 500 companies outside of the Bay Area. We have the greatest number of capital venture-backed firms started this year in California. We need to use this as leverage. We are surrounded by Hyperion, Chevron, and LAX. We know we have an environmental health problem. We know we moved here knowing it, but those two things don't negate each other. It also means that everybody is expected to do better. And I honestly think we've outgrown this issue. This is too big for El Segundo to handle on our own. It really is. We need leverage with our state representatives, with our federal representatives. And so I would support getting an environmental lobbyist to go to Sacramento and fight for our interests and to fight for our interests with the EPA and federal agencies because we won't be able to solve it on our own.
John?
Yeah, so Hyperion started off as an environmental disaster, and now it's a health disaster. It was sad, like Ryan said, getting that question today from the kids, is the air safe to breathe? I think we need to be on top of this in all the ways that we can. And we seem to be doing that now, but there was a big lapse in those first six weeks from when the incident happened until now. And I think we, as a city, always need to remain committed to something when we start it. It shouldn't take a resident talking about how she was up all night because of the smell and had to pull over on the side of the road when driving to work the next day so she didn't fall asleep behind the wheel. We can never lose sight of our goals when we set them. I think we just, again, we put in the work and thought it was done, and we wiped our hands from it. We need to stay on top of it. And we have no environmental employees on staff here in El Segundo. The people responsible for that have a bunch of other tasks. I think it's time that we have environmental employees on the staff who can really take care of this when it happens.
Robin?
Thank you. Definitely, we need accountability, of course. The city has gone and declared a public emergency, which I support. I think we all support that. It is a quagmire. Now, I do support the city initiating a lawsuit. So I think that's a way to get the, you know, the Hyperion's attention. But we also need more advocates. We've got several, we've got state entities, pardon me, we've got several environmental entities with different jurisdictions, and it's just all over the place. And we need more advocating from the city council, whether it's like Michelle mentioned, or, you know, having a lobbyist. But I do believe that, as for right now, that going with a lawsuit is a good way. But we need more engagement with our local, the different air quality management boards and environmental entities.
Okay, thank you. This next set of questions are directly from the public. They sent these in, and they were put together. Some of the things have been answered already, so I'm going to jump around a little bit and do some alternatives. The first question, and I think I did Chris last, so we'll start with Ryan this time, is, do you believe the small-town feel of El Segundo is under threat? And if so, what will you do to preserve it?
Well, it's under a threat from the laws being passed by Sacramento. They've already passed SB 9, allows anyone to buy a single-family lot, designed for one family, subdivided, put four townhomes there. They've passed AB 2011, says you can put high-density housing in the commercial area. So the reason we have a small town is because it's been designed as a small town. We literally live in a one-mile bubble, and I love that about this town. When I first interviewed for Planning Commission 14 years ago, Eric Bush asked me, what do you feel about housing that side of PCH? And this is before I knew that that's where we get our taxes, is before I knew that was Wisburne School District, it'd be a separate school district. And I just said, you know, I don't like that because the fact that we're all on top of each other kind of gives us this sense of community. I'm going to do everything I can. Hopefully, I'm successful in trying to preserve the quality of our small-town life. And, you know, I think it's important, as all of you do.
Okay, thank you. Michelle?
So here's what I think gives us our small-town character. We are literally this safe haven in this massive metropolitan area. And if you have ever been in this community and experienced loss, whether it's a loved one, a pet that ran down the street, I mean, people show up. They bring casseroles, more food than you ever want. They're at your door, they're begging to help. That is what makes us a small town. It's that consistency of people showing up for one another. During COVID, I know there was this net promoter score that goes around. We asked residents what they're most satisfied, least satisfied, and loss of a small-town feel was definitely at the top. But we connected that to this idea that COVID had taken away all of our community events. And so we weren't seeing each other, we weren't engaging. To me, that is our small-town feel, and I think the further we get away from that, we will see that sense of community continue. In terms of the state mandates, you know, SB 9, yes, it takes a single-family lot and splits it into two. From a planning standpoint, what we did was spearhead an effort to create the design standards around that so that we make it less desirable. You require one of those units to be affordable so that corporations aren't coming in and doing that.
Thank you. John?
So one of the main reasons I moved to El Segundo was for that small-town feel, and it's something I never want to see us lose. But I think we have to understand that, like everyone's been saying, we live in one square mile of residents, essentially. If we push that out to east side of PCH, that's just another half-mile. It could be across the street, depending on where you live in town. I don't think by being part of the affordable housing solution, we're going to be ruining our small-town feel. If you're not going to be friends with somebody because they now live a half a mile away, I got news for you, probably we're never that good of friends anyway, okay? I think we have an opportunity here to be a part of the solution. And El Segundo, we're 100 years old. We've been built out through the decades, time and time again, and we've never lost that small-town feel. And I think when things come our way, like outdoor dining, opportunities that really enhance our small-town feel, we need to take hold of that, and that will keep us having the small-town feel.
Thank you, John. Robin?
Yes, I do feel that the small-town feel is at risk right now, in particular with wanting to expand housing east of PCH. I do, of course, want affordable housing as well. I feel that within our limits right now, that we can do things like rezone Smoky Hollow and allow residents to be built there. And I'm also in favor of, I don't want to say mandating, but making a certain percentage of new builds affordable housing. So for instance, like one out of five units. But I do feel that that small-town feel is at risk, but we also have opportunities within our current parameters to accommodate the needs of our community, especially the underserved community.
Michelle? As I recall, everyone here said they supported Measure BT.
I think you missed me.
Who did I miss?
My answer's obviously predictable because I look just like Ryan, but... But in that regard, though, he's exactly right. And pass the glasses down. El Segundo exists in a manner that is attractive to all of us because we see each other every day and because we have community norms that are reinforced by seeing one another, those norms of volunteerism, those norms of generosity, those norms of obeying rules as long as they don't involve helmets and bird scooters. Those sorts of things are directly at threat by pressure to chase state mandates. And if we chase them and fail to chase them on our own terms, then we risk all of the things that make this place different and make it special. So the lot-splitting regulations are horrible. The idea of a forced conversion of commercial properties to residential could be incredibly destructive by making those service-intensive high-rises, which is something that I don't even want to conceive of. So Ryan's exactly right. If there's a risk to the sort of existential character of this town, it is chasing those mandates in a manner that is not set by us, but set by a perception of what someone in Sacramento wants.
Thank you. Sorry about that. We'll fix that in rehearsal.
I'll forgive you this time.
Doc might pay.
Getting a ticket on the way out.
I probably have one by now. I think Drew wrote me one. All right. Measure BT, Michelle. What is your, well, we already established your stances on Measure BT, but if the voters pass this measure and you were elected to council, will you support a phased in approach over several years in order to ease the significant tax increase on El Segundo business, especially hotels?
Absolutely. So I do support Measure BT. I think it was John who said begrudgingly, and this might speak to that begrudgingly part of the equation. We have a very outdated business license tax system. It hasn't been updated in decades, and what we're trying to do as a community, as a city, is move from an industrial type employment base to something that represents more of our modern economy. And in many ways, this does serve that need, and it will generate three to four million in annual tax dollars that will go directly into our general fund. I do support a phased approach because as of right now, there are not tiers that would distinguish between the size of a business. And that is something that I think we need to give particularly small businesses time to adjust to. There's a component for hotels and for apartments that went from a flat fee. So to give you an example, the Fairfield Hotel was $450 a year was their business license tax. This would increase it to $30,000 a year, and they pay transit occupancy tax on top of that. But we do need to draw from our commercial businesses more so, but that's a huge jump in one year.
John.
Yeah, I agree with a lot of what Michelle said. This ballot Measure BT was proposed, I think in June, had to be submitted by August, and it's already on the ballot. I think it does need to, our business license tax does need to be revamped, but this is, I feel like we brushed this process. And for that reason, I would phase, I would support a phased in approach. And I think what is problematic to me about Measure BT is the one size fits all approach. It doesn't distinguish whether you're the largest business in town or you're a corner shop on Main Street. You're all gonna, we're all gonna have the same increases. And we need to really support our small businesses especially. This is going to be an added cost that they weren't expecting. Like I said, it was June submitted in August. That's just not a lot of turnaround time for these businesses. Yes, it's been decades since it's been reformed. We need to make the change, but we need to phase it in and, you know, next time we need to give people more of a heads up of what's coming.
Robin.
Yes, thank you. That's a great question. I definitely support increasing and revamping the business license tax. But I do feel that it should be on a per capita basis, meaning based on the size of the business. I think we're definitely all pro small business here, and I would not want to overburden small businesses. However, we've got huge corporations that aren't paying their fair share. And so I definitely do support increasing the business license tax, but it needs to be evaluated on a case by case basis, not just a blanket increase. And I do also think that there is an opportunity with the transient occupancy tax to increase that, the hotel tax. I think that would also be another source of revenue for the city.
Okay. Thank you. Ryan, just kidding. Chris.
I'm Measure PT guy, so I brought my helmet in case Brenda and Lily want to hit me in the head on the way out. But we pushed for this, and the royal we, in 2018, and through the pandemic, it just fell out of the workflow. And when the summer popped up, we realized if we didn't get it on the ballot, it would have to wait till 2024. And, you know, two more years of regulating pool halls, fortune tellers, and circuses, but not addressing financial institutions or internet companies was something that I did not think it was wise for us to continue doing. What El Segundo will do and continue to do is assess a fee based on your square footage and headcount. We do that because that's what it takes for our services to administer you. We are not going to charge a tax based on how successful your business is and tax your gross receipts. We're not interested in penalizing businesses. This is an attempt to do that and update it for the 21st century so it is clear, relevant, and transparent. And if there are things that need to be phased in, I have no issue. I have no issue if this doesn't raise a cent, but I'm not going to regulate circuses anymore.
Thank you. Ryan.
We need to pass Measure BT. Our business tax is outdated, is no longer working for us, we are losing revenue. It does differentiate from a solo practitioner like myself. I would pay the 150 flat fee. If there was a large firm, they would pay additional money for each employee and the square footage they had. So big companies do pay more, but what's important is we don't ask to tax your revenues. Okay? We want to maintain the business friendly, you know, prestige that we enjoy here in town. What gets hurt in Measure BT are hotels and apartments, but they have been being undertaxed for a long time. $425 a year for hotel. If they get one police officer called that hotel, we are losing money on that business from the money they're giving the city. Now, the way the law is written, they will be taxed 150 per room, and that's a very large number, but it also gives the city council discretion to meet with the hotels and figure out what works for you. How can we phase this in? And that's what I would recommend we do. First, we tax it, and then the city council does what they do best. You reach out to the stakeholders and you make it work.
Okay. I started with you, right, Michelle? Last one. All right, so John. What environmental goals do you have for El Segundo and how do you think El Segundo should address climate change?
That's a great question. So as everyone knows, our neighbors are the airport, Chevron, and our best friend, Hyperion. And we have no environmental employees on staff. I think that is, the first step is hiring someone whose job is dedicated to be an advocate for us with these large polluting neighbors. On a smaller scale, I think we need to look to just be more green and sustainable where we can. E-bikes have been, you know, dominating the Facebook pages here in El Segundo. The fact is, people have changed the way we move, and we need to adapt to that and create more bike lanes. This will keep less cars on the road and will just make us a more bike friendly city or, you know, the E3s, the golf carts. At the same time, these vehicles need to know that they don't rule the, excuse me, rule the road, and we need to put safety measures in place. But right now, we are complaining about this, rightly so, but we haven't given them the space to move.
Thank you. Robin.
Yes, that's a great question. Now, of course, we all want cleaner environment. Air quality is especially an issue, in my opinion. Now, it kind of piggybacks on what we've been saying earlier with the Hyperion plant. The city council does need to put more pressure on the government entities that we're dealing with. We've got several different environmental agencies. So I do think that we could establish a committee. I love John's idea of, you know, putting forth, excuse me, an employee, but we also have to think about budget. So I would propose a committee put together of local, our locals here that are, we've got plenty of professionals here that know what they're doing and that contribute their time. So I would say leverage the community that we have already. Thank you.
Chris.
Yeah, I think as far as emissions and greenhouse gas goes, we've been fortunate that we've been selected repeatedly for leadership roles within the coalition of governments. So insofar as the transportation chair, which I hold, we are building the local travel network. And the local travel network lets you connect all the South Bay cities. So if you want to take multimodal transportation, whether it's an electric bike or a golf cart or a supersized neighborhood electric vehicle, you can do that on specified routes with wayfinding signage that lets you go so you don't feel like you're in peril for your life trying to connect to a different city. Now, we have a particular challenge because we're on a bit of an island in El Segundo. So you'll see it tied together more in Torrance and Redondo, North Redondo. Our connection will be off Douglas. But phase two of that is to try and work to a connection on the beach, which involves beaches and harbors. So I'm sure you can tell it'll be a 30-year project. But, you know, these are things that are front of mind, and the nice thing with that is it's something that we can control as far as the implementation and process, as far as aspirational means of monitoring, you know, DWP.
Ryan.
The best thing the city can do with climate change is really lead by example. And that means when they make decisions, have the conversation, what impact does this have on the environment? What can we be doing to help the environment? One of the other things I don't like about these laws coming down from Sacramento that are adding more density and more cars is that they all have a statute in there that says they're exempt from any secret analysis. So when they build these things, we no longer get the advantage of having our environmental analysis done to find out what are the impacts of the neighbors? What's going to happen with the noise and the construction? Because again, they're trying to solve the housing crisis, and they're putting the concerns of the environment to the side. So that's going to be a challenge we're going to have to face as these laws keep getting passed. But as a local city level, we've got an environmental committee that comes up with great ideas. Single use utensils at restaurants is a good one. But also, when the city does their purchasing, when the city does their transactions, they should be asking questions. Are we doing what's best for the environment?
Michelle.
Sure. So at the city level, you know, there are some low hanging fruit that, yes, we can take care of. Getting rid of single use plasticware, composting, things that our environmental committee is spearheading and doing that well. But when we really talk about climate change, I mean, those are definitely nice to haves, and that changes behavior, and everybody's behavior needs to change in order to see a dent in climate change. However, our roadways and LAX, I mean, we're, we could never use a piece of plastic again, and we're not going to compare with the damage that is created by that. So I'm going to go back to this idea, just for our environmental health, of a lobbyist, somebody who is fighting for our interests in Sacramento nationally as it relates to LAX, continuing to infringe on El Segundo, Hyperion, making sure that that's addressed, continuing to monitor Chevron in those ways. The other component of housing, obviously, you know, more residents, yes, bigger footprint, but at the same time, reduced commute for teachers, fire, police officers, young professionals.
Okay. Thank you. I've been riding furious oil over here because of being mindful of time. We're closing in on eight o'clock. We want to get everyone home at a good enough hour. So we're going to start another lightning round. So we're going to go quick answers here. We're going to start with Robin. Would you ever support going county for police or fire? Yes or no?
Can you say that again, please?
Would you ever support going to county for police or fire services?
No.
Chris.
No.
John.
No.
Michelle.
Never.
No.
Okay. Do you have school age children and do they go to El Segundo schools? Chris.
Yes, one.
No, except for the two cats that I mentioned earlier.
That doesn't count.
Yes, two.
Yes, my boys go to school here.
Okay. Rob.
Yes, I have three school age children, and they're not in El Segundo UST. They're in LA UST.
Okay. This, okay, this was tossed to us by a member of the public. Is President Bush the legally elected president of the United States? Ryan.
Biden is the president of the United States. Yes, sir.
That was a test?
I passed it.
Biden is the legal president of the United States.
Joe Biden is the legal president of the United States.
Whose questions are these? Biden's.
This is from your public. This is from, these are from your constituents.
So you asked, is Bush, is that what I heard?
Is Biden the legally elected president of the United States?
Yes, I begrudgingly agree with that.
Okay. Fair enough. All right, that takes us to our closing statements then. These will be two minutes for closing statements, and we're going to go in reverse alphabetical order, which leads us off with Chris Penatell.
I don't know why I'm flipping my papers over. I rehearsed this. There's real changes coming down the pipe and real challenges in the next four years. And I think that we've touched on a lot of them here, and there's no surprise, housing, Hyperion, policing in the broader environment, and our infrastructure as it dilapidates are probably the biggest ones. Having been the incumbent, you know, I think you can see sort of my methods and how I make my decisions on these things. It is solutions focused, it is not ideological. So when it comes to policing, we look at the police chief and say, do you have the assets that you need? And he says, yes. And he says, or if I need five new motorcycles, we budget for five new motorcycles. And we build out structures to support him. If he needs extra police officers and wants to over hire to 67 because he has retirements above the statutory limit of 62, he can do that. But 62 is our limit because that's what he says he needs. But he's allowed to over hire, so he has them in the pipeline. When it comes to Hyperion, we have an environmental consultant. If he's ineffective, we should replace him, right? It is a difficult piece for us moving forward to look at these things and say, well, in a crystal ball, what are the next four years going to be? You're really at this point making a decision about, do I like the way that these people come to their conclusions and make decisions for us? At the two-year mark, we had just gotten the Topgolf deal signed, we had just funded our pension bond, and we thought, what do we have to do in the next two years? Lo and behold, we have protests and a pandemic. So I will never go down, go down that path and say that I think we've got things figured out. But when it comes to housing, we have a plan that we can pursue. When it comes to policing, we have a plan we can pursue. When it comes to Hyperion, we have a plan that we can pursue. I would ask that you have faith in my decision-making ability on that and our ability to take our decisions and approach these challenges in a methodological way that'll lead to positive results. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Ryan.
Oh. Reverse alphabetical goes right to Baldino.
No, we'll go, we'll.
It's fine, it's fine. I'm only giving you a hard time because you're.
Back to the top order, we'll go to Robin.
No, no, I can, I can go.
Okay.
Don't fight.
I thought John was.
We'll gotta go in reverse, total reverse.
Okay, we're switching it up. So my, I'm a single mom, like I said, so my first time running for office, and I firmly believe in a grassroots approach. All of my fellow panelists here, of course, care about the community, but I believe in making a bigger change in our country overall. I do feel that overall, our country is in decline, and I feel that we can make a change from the ground up. So I put myself out there, jumped into the deep end, but I do firmly believe in supporting our local community. And this town provides excellent opportunity to do that. Residents love to help each other out, and we actually know our neighbors. So this town is a great opportunity to make a change, and that's pretty much what I plan to do here. And I feel that we also need young blood, new people. Not that you're that old, but. That was mean, I'm sorry. But I think that it's always good to have, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have said that. I was just thinking it, but I shouldn't have said it. Anyhow, so I do believe in just, you know, getting new people in, and so that's why I'm here. Thank you.
The seating arrangement has killed me all night. All right. So next up, we're going to go to John.
Okay. So we're at an inflection point right now in El Segundo. We have two choices. We can continue with the status quo and avoid difficult conversations and uncomfortable conversations, or we can commit to bringing out the best in El Segundo. This is our first city council election since a social justice protest broke out in May of 2020 at the corner of Main and Imperial. Residents came out in droves to take the streets and demanded change here in El Segundo. No doubt we were heard. The city now has a diversity, equity, inclusion committee. The city's legislative platform, its number one goal is to embrace diversity, equity, inclusion. But there's a difference, like I said, between being heard and being empowered. And the reality is, most of the action the city took was just window dressing. The DEI committee has no budget, their progress is halted at every turn, and that number one goal from the legislative platform, to embrace DEI, like I said, there was no language about how the city planned to do that in the entire 13-page document. That's concerning. You know, I talk about the water tower a lot, but what I don't talk about as often is how I had to fight tooth and nail with a former city manager just to get that to happen. I was told no again and again, but I stuck with it, the tower got lit, and guess what? The community embraced it. And I truly believe we're a better city because of it. I promised to bring that same tenacity to all the issues facing El Segundo, from Hyperion to affordable housing to public safety. Our community already reflects the desire to see more action like this. It's why we need someone on council genuinely committed to these values, genuinely committed to carrying out the city's number one goal. I don't want us to miss this moment, this opportunity to deliver on a more inclusive and welcoming El Segundo. I'm seeking to be that voice, that fresh perspective on council, who will champion and advocate for all to help ensure El Segundo becomes the best version of itself. and advocate for all to help ensure El Segundo becomes the best version of itself.
Thank you. Michelle?
Absolutely. So as somebody who greatly values education and communication, this Q and A has always been my favorite part of the process at every meet and greet, every opportunity to talk with residents. At a recent event, I was asked what a successful four-year term would look like for me, and I thought that was a great question. So, one, it would mean that we've created housing options that meet the needs of our community so that teachers, public safety personnel, seniors, and young professionals can continue to contribute here. Two, that we've established a public infrastructure budget, a plan for addressing our long-term needs. Three, as I've said, that we engage a lobbyist to fight for our environmental health. Given our economic significance in the region, I do believe we have leverage here. And then finally, that all those who live and work here are supported. That means that our public safety personnel have the resources they need to be successful, and that El Segundo is a welcoming and inclusive community. And it's this last point that I want to linger on for a minute, and it came up earlier, but these past few weeks have been a great opportunity for me to be reminded that nobody is all one thing or another. We all have the ability to hold two beliefs at the same time. For me, that is a deep respect and appreciation for our public service personnel who are out there every day keeping our community safe. And I acknowledge that as a community, we all have work to do before everyone feels safe and included here. I am running because I believe it's important that our city leadership reflects the makeup of our community. I do not have any business interests in the city. My commitment is that I will use my voice to promote your interests. I will lead proactively, foster open community dialogue, and draw from my professional background to navigate the opportunities and challenges ahead. I thank you very much for your time tonight, and I respectfully ask that you vote Michelle Keldorf on November 8th.
Right. All right, again, thank you all for coming out. I mean, this is a great example of what makes our town so great. I have not been ignoring you. They just put the chair this way, so you know. I'm running because I want to continue to work for our city. I want to use my experience and my dedication to the city on city council. And by experience, I mean a couple of things. One is, I'm a trial attorney, okay? I deal with conflict on a daily basis. I deal with large complex cases. I deal with stakeholders who do not like each other, and my job is to find a solution out of that problem. I also, as a trial attorney, am tasked with taking something that's usually complex and very boring and making it explainable so people understand what the story is. I want to bring those skills to city council. What I believe I've been able to do as your planning commissioner is handle some of the largest projects that have come through this town in the last 14 years. There have been hundreds of millions of dollars of projects that have gone through the planning commission, and not all those have been meted with open arms. There have been issues when it comes to Airbnbs, there's been the party house ordinance. We've had some very exciting hearings, and I believe I've been able to steer those hearings while taking an input from the community and trying to reach consensus that works for everyone. And that's the simple goal of this job. You're going to elect someone you think has the experience and determination to do what's best for your city, and I want to be that person. Now, one thing I forgot to mention is that I'm a big supporter of our schools. Not only been an Ed Foundation, but I've served now on the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. And again, that's me using my experience as a construction attorney, one who used to represent school districts and bond programs and see their money get wasted because of litigation. And I didn't want that to happen in our town, all right? I want to be an advocate for this town, I want to be an advocate for you, and you all should be aware, there's a lot of challenges that this town is facing. But when I go on doors and I hear people complain about Hyperion, or the homeless, or the crime, that conversation always ends the same way. There's no better town I'd rather live in than El Segundo. Thank you.
All right, folks, that's it.